Screen is on.
Screen's on.
Red light on, we're good. All right, so we're at a meeting of the city council. Joel Greenberg absent tonight. We have council member Alders, Mayor Pilon, Councilmember Rainville, and Councilmember Blake. And this is for interviews for an open position on the Planning and Zoning Commission. We have two candidates. And our first candidate tonight is Dana Henjum. Did you need a copy of the application? Because I've got it electronically here too, so. We have a series of questions, and so we're going to ask you the same questions we asked the next candidate, so that everybody gets the same treatment here. And so, our first question tonight is, tell us a little bit about yourself, why you're interested in serving on the Planning Commission, and then just highlight for us what you know about the city of Nowland and why you'd be interested in joining this team.
Okay. Again, my name's Dana Henjum. I've been a Nowland resident since 1997. I owned my land since 94, but we waited a few years before we built. I live over on Gypsy Valley Road, which is just west of Cleary, north of Old Viking. And Mr. Mayor, I may answer out of, you asked about three different things there, it seemed like.
Yeah, so it was, who are you? Why you're interested in the commission, serving on the commission? A little bit of what you know about the city and basically why you're interested in joining the team.
Okay. As far as being on the Planning and Zoning Commission, it's not something I, I've always heard about it, and I followed some of the minutes, but just because I've done some things with the city, working on some of the buildings, just interacting with the city, interacting with Mr. Boils, just conveying that, you know, in general, I care about Nowland, and it came up about, you know, maybe I should, and there was no, I wasn't being recruited or scouted, but just one opportunity to help the town out is to be on the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, again, it wasn't something that I'd thought about for a long time, but when I became aware of the, maybe the need to have other people on the commission to help out, I guess here I am for that. As far as my background goes, I've been a general contractor for a little over 20 years, but I'm old enough that besides those 20 years, I've got about 20 years of operations management in three different factories. And, and I did that after I graduated from St. Cloud State in 84. So, I actually think that my plant manager positions and the compliance issues that I had to deal with as far as safety, environmental, those things, I think they, they helped me, actually made me be, maybe a better general contractor, because I had the chance to work with a lot of professional, I'll say corporate people, and also working with different cities, and, you know, be at local, state, and federal levels, especially on the environmental compliance, and just had the opportunity to be with, work with a lot of professional people and be part of some successful operations.
Great.
And I think as far as that goes, then, when I became a general contractor and working with different cities and different inspectors and that type of thing, I guess I enjoy that. I enjoy the front-end work as far as projects go. If it's a little more complicated, I want the inspectors to be happy, and I want them to, you know, tell me what they want to see in a project too. A lot of it's the simple stuff. I mean, today I put in a patio door, and that was stressful enough, because I was hoping I'd get it done and get here on time, but, because you've got to finish that. But, anyway, again, being in Nowland, I like to say that I'm from Nowland. I enjoy that. I think it's kind of cool. But I do like the town, and, you know, it's been interesting. I've been at meetings here where it's, you know, there's been some celebration of differences over time, but, other than that, I mean, there's just, there's just a lot of people, and people care, so sometimes they get a little passionate about that. But it's been fun as a general contractor doing some of the projects on some of the buildings here and then working with different people, and it's been great, you know, just working on the fire hall addition and meeting the fire department. I mean, there's a lot of positive things going on here, so.
Great.
Thank you. So, the next question is, briefly describe the three most important personal qualities you believe are necessary to operate effectively as a team.
Okay. Well, I would say, first of all, as, working as a team, I would say trying to strive to be a team, and that's not always easy, because people on a team can come from different backgrounds, they represent different things, they may represent other groups, and those groups expect them to convey their interests too, but I think I would strive to find common ground on the team. I think I'd also want to be a good listener, and I would want everybody else, as far as good listening goes, I think making sure everybody else on the team hears it too. And I think the bottom line is, if it's a team, and there's going to be maybe a consensus to go along with the team's decision. It doesn't mean that the team's always going to agree 100%, but I think it's important that, you know, even if there's some passionate disagreement, if there's, if there's an agreement, the team in a way comes first, and everything should be fine regardless of if you totally agree with the decision or not as part of the team.
All right. So what are your thoughts related to maintaining our city's rural character? And what does your view of growth look like in a community like ours?
Well, when we built 97, Benny Emborn was the building inspector, so I told Benny, I said, you know, I just assume not have anybody move up here. He goes, that's what everybody says, move up here and shut the gate. I understand, I mean, if I understood the 2040 plan, what I looked at it, I mean, we're roughly 40, 400 people now, and I think we're looking at around 50, 500 anticipating in 2040. Is that, is that right as far as a population projection?
Well, it depends on who fills out their census forms or not.
Sure, I get that.
We'd argue it'd be 5,000 by this next year, so. But yeah, we're about 4,500.
Okay. And, and then just, again, just because I was curious about the 2040 plan, because it's mentioned, I mean, it looks like, and we've already started it, as far as over on 47, some development there, and that looks like what the future holds as far as maybe light manufacturing, manufacturing, whatever it is, maybe some retail. But I do like the low density. Again, being, I've lived there, where I lived for, since 97, I happen to be on a flag lot, so I have a very long driveway, so my property is what I would say behind other properties as far as Gypsy Valley Road goes. We've all got around five to eight acres in our area. I think all of us tend to like our elbow room, so I just assume if we can do that realistically, as far as maintain that, but again, that's, I guess, more up to the council, I guess, than, than the PMZ, but, but I do like the elbow room, and I think everybody else does too. We just got new neighbors, and they moved from Brooklyn Park, and actually, this is kind of their retirement home, they said, but they're just, they're just thrilled to be here, and I think that just kind of speaks how a lot of us feel, so.
Thank you. So, touching us a little bit, but describe your relevant work experience, your education background, your particular skills and abilities. How might you think they relate to a position like this?
Well, my educational background, again, my degree is in management. I've got a Bachelor of Science in Management from St. Cloud State. Honestly, I, one of the few things I remember about my management degree was in one of my classes, organizational theory and behavior, was if people don't get along, make them work together. But otherwise, I mean, I, I guess I could have got more out of my education at, at St. Cloud, but it is what it is. I'm sure I got more than I realized, but I think where I really cut my teeth was on, on my job out of college, working at McLean and West. It was a pretty demanding situation. I worked for a pretty tough boss for many years. We were very busy, and, and it was very fast-paced, and we had to succeed every day. There was no, there was no tomorrow. Every day had to, you know, basically get the trucks out and that type of thing. But again, that's where, besides the operation side of it and getting product out the door, just all the compliance things, and again, all the, all the environmental compliance, the safety side of it, we were pretty successful in safety. And then after that, I went over to a company called Modine Manufacturing, was plant manager there, and again, good operation. We were, we were smaller in terms of the other factories in the corporation, but we were probably more successful than others as far as safety and things like that go. So, again, those, those experiences and that day-to-day, get it done, working with people, and again, that's people in the factory, people in the office, I think, and again, that set me up as far as general contracting, I've done for about 20 years. And then, in general contracting, I mean, then you've got people at, you know, manufacturing, I like to say every day was game day, but when you're working on people's projects in their home, that's their Super Bowl, and that's pretty interesting too. So while you've got to keep people happy and whatever their emotions are as far as homeowners, and they're spending a lot of money, and then managing crews and herding cats sometimes and working with the city, cities and that type of thing, I don't know. I think they've all kind of gone hand-in-hand, so.
And I should say, if the council, if, if there's something that you want clarified on that pertains to that question, feel free to ask for clarification.
Yeah, I don't want to be too vague either, so I apologize if I am, but.
Yeah, because really, what we're looking for is, is all that you bring to the table, how does it apply to something like planning and zoning, as you understand planning and zoning?
Well, when I look at planning and zoning then, again, to me, planning and zoning is trying to understand, obviously, we, we have a, we meet because there's something that wants, something wants to, there's a, a request or a desire to do something on a piece of land, I guess, to be general. And so the question is to understand what that is, and how does that apply to existing codes and other, other factors that either make it okay to do it or are not okay at the time, and if there needs to be recommended changes. But again, my understanding is the Planning and Zoning Commission just presents those thoughts to the council, and it's up to the council to decide to proceed further if it needs to be changes.
Thank you. Are you familiar with open meeting laws?
Yeah. My understanding is, and I've kind of learned about that through some just observation here in Nowland over the years, but my understanding is that, I don't think you guys could go look at a piece of property by, as, just as your council, or a few of you could go look at that and talk about it. I think that has to be like a public thing, my understanding is. I don't quite get that as far as the Planning and Zoning Commission. If, if you're on the commission, you have to do a site visit. I don't know how that works. Obviously, if there's rules that apply to that, and so if you're on the commission, you've got to follow the rules, but my understanding is there's really nothing in secret as far as it goes on.
Yeah, so, just real briefly, you know, the council as a, as a public entity, and the commission as a public entity, all public bodies, the meetings have to be required to be open to the public and recorded in some manner. The additional part as it comes to the discussion before the commission would be anything that's a public matter, if you have a quorum of the commission, you can't discuss it outside the public arena. If we're not in this arena or there, or it's public notice. So if the commission's going out to a site and all of them are going to be there, we would publicly notice.
I'm sorry, you would publicly notify?
We'd notify, we'd say, yeah, the commission as a quorum would be out of the site. Typically, if people are visiting a site, they go out there alone or with one other person. So the commissioners consist, whenever it's a quorum, it's verbal, written, or electronic. So the problem is, it's not just what we discuss here, but you can't call the other commissioners or email them or text them with your thoughts on it.
Right, and that was like a question with the.
It has to be out of the public. Same thing applies to the council. So, so with that is, is a restriction, if you will, it's, it's a benefit to the public that wants to know what we're all doing. Do you have any concerns that you can function under that, knowing that you can't just go and, like a business meeting, go and talk with your peers or your, your business partners on that? It's, it's got to be done in this room or in a public setting.
No, I have no concerns with that. I understand that the transparency gives people trust in the process, so if they didn't, if they thought there was private discussions, they wouldn't trust that. So, I mean, I've always thought that was a challenge for you as a council. It'd be nice if you guys could hang out once in a while, but I don't know if that'd be legal. But it might, it might help do things at times, but.
There's many times I wish it was like a business meeting, unfortunately.
Or a picnic, where you guys could just get, find some common ground at times, but anyway, sorry.
Socialize.
Yeah.
It doesn't look good to the public, though.
Yeah, we have to watch ourselves at funerals even, so. All right, so we do expect the commissioners to come prepared for the meeting ahead of time, be ready at the start of the commission meetings. You sound like you're, you're quite busy. How will you adjust your schedule to accommodate the time needed to actually review the meeting materials, maybe make a site visit, and then attend each meeting? Do you have any issues concerning the required time to prepare and attend meetings?
I do have a concern as far as, not, not as far as preparation and that type of thing, but I own my business, I would say I'm a small business. I'm very involved with it, you know, from meeting with clients to putting bids together to doing the work, and, you know, today was an example too. It was just a, a simple patio door, but a little complex, and houses can be challenging, and it sounds simple, but I've got to take care of my clients, and I've got to, I can't walk away from a job. So, that, that is a concern of mine as far as my schedule. I mean, if I'm going to do this, if I was, if you guys decided that, yes, Dana, we want you on the Planning and Zoning Commission, I understand that that has to happen. So, yeah, that, that is a challenge for me as far as, you know, and again, it's supposedly one evening a month, I got a feeling there's a little more to it as far as potential site visits and that. I mean, I don't know, I want to understand that. But that is a challenge, because I also have to take care of my clients, because I, I've got to, you know, it's, it's my business. So I want to be transparent about that too. So, you know, and on that whole topic, I knew you were going to talk to somebody after me, and, you know, as far as that goes, I, you know, I don't know if it's just going to be one person that you might want, perhaps two, I don't know, but I, I want you to pick the right person. I'm okay regardless. I want the right person on, in the position. I'm, I'm really okay with that. To be honest, when I turned in the application, it was a while ago, and I, I really thought it, so much time had passed, I thought, well, I'm, I'm not going to be, I'm not on it.
You weren't chosen.
I'm not even going to be talked to, you know, it was fine, I guess, you know. So anyway, I, you know, I want the best person, if it's one person, I want, you know, if the other person's better, and I, I do think she has some good qualities, so be it. I'm all for that, so.
You know, Mr. Mayor, Jason served for quite a while on the Planning and Zoning. How many, many site visits do you feel like you had while you were there?
I didn't go to any site visits. Maybe I looked at the material a few hours before the meetings, but, I mean, Liz usually provides a topographical map and provides you all the details of what's going on there if there's something specific. I didn't though.
But, so.
Some people do though, I mean, it's.
So how many meetings? One meeting a month is what, pretty much?
Yeah, I mean.
Is it the fourth Tuesday?
Fourth Tuesday.
Tuesday of the month?
It's not a huge time limit in terms of the meeting and the prep time. I understand your concern on if it's 6:45 and a job's not going well, and you need to be somewhere by 7:00, that can present a challenge, but, I mean, that's, that's life, right?
Yeah, and I think, I think, and, I mean, I'm, I'm familiar with what you do, Jason, as a job, I mean, as a general contractor, you do have some flexibility also. I mean, today I didn't even have time for a drink, and literally, I drank water when I left the job, but anyway, so be it. I could have had water with me at the job site, but, my, my point is, I got a little, I have a little flexibility in that I, you know, my days are all over the place. I'm not, like in the old days, at the factory, I'm at the factory. I'm driving there, and I'm staying there, and for the most part, I know that opportunity to drive around, but if what I do, I travel quite a bit, so I can kind of adjust my schedule at times too as far as that goes. So, between me and you, we're in different, we're in a different situation occupationally as far as flexibility.
And I think that has to be account, we got retirees here, that's a whole different ballgame than someone in there still and actively and working, and there has to be some consideration for that.
Right, and I plan on working two years after I die, so I mean, I'm going to be busy.
Oh, there you go, so there, okay.
And Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
To Councilmember Blake's comment on retirement, but we even have issues that come up.
Oh, yeah.
So, I mean, it is difficult.
We've got one not here tonight.
Yeah.
But he's not retiring.
I don't want Dale Ames mad at me.
To find out where you live.
Yeah.
I don't think he will be.
He's only mad if he don't get a quorum.
But that is a concern of mine. I want to be real transparent about that, and that's where I want, like I said.
Appreciate it.
I want the best person to have this that can feel comfortable about that too. I don't, I would plan on making all the meetings if I was asked to be on the commission, but I'm just saying, it's, it's not just a slam dunk where I can do that. I mean, I plan on it.
But that's life. Not everything is a slam dunk.
Thank you. All right, so, you know, the commission is an advisory group, obviously essential to the council, do research and present recommendations, but how would you react when the city council votes differently from what the commission recommends?
I, I've thought about that, but I honestly don't think it's going to bother me unless I was really, I mean, unless it was really in tune to somebody's request. I mean, I've been to meetings where I know Liz has presented things and made recommendations, and, but I, I just don't know that I would, I mean, I, you know, I just don't think it would, because you guys would make a decision based on criteria, so I don't know that I would get that passionate about something as being on the commission. I don't mean to say I don't care, but I just don't know that I would care that much. I mean, one thing I, sometimes following leadership is another example of leadership, I'll say, as far as, you know, support, in this case, supporting the council, and I think that's important, so. And sometimes closed doors are a blessing anyway, so I'm old enough to know that.
Yeah, we all learn that, don't we?
Have you had any opportunities, you mentioned the comprehensive plan, to review the comprehensive plan, or planning ordinances, or zoning regulations, and if you have, what comments do you have on those documents?
I don't know that I have any comments on it, because I guess I don't, I mean, I've looked at that, but I don't, I just, I don't think I have any comments. I mean, I understand it, but, well, I understand what I understand. I guess I think I would, if I was on the commission, I'd look to Liz to help explain some things. I guess I would trust her. I've worked with Liz a little bit and just kind of watched her in action and chatted with her and that type of thing, so.
All right. Obviously, as commissioner, it's important to listen to both sides of a matter that's presented to you with an open and fair mind. Evaluate the information you receive and make a recommendation, and sometimes those recommendations don't please everyone, including your, your commission members or the applicants who are applying. How would you respond to either commission members or applicants who are not pleased with the recommendation that comes forward?
Well, if I understand a recommendation, that would mean that I'd be recommending that there'd be some changes also, because again, if somebody's requesting something, it's not against any, it's not any violation or anything, isn't that kind of a, like it can happen? I mean, like if somebody wants to put a building up, or, I don't know, and it, and it doesn't violate anything, or, you know, isn't that all, what are we talking, like new businesses and operating, but I, I still think there has to be rules that are followed, so apparently I'd be recommending that rules be changed. Is that what we're talking about here?
Or you could just say the applicant comes in and, and they want the building, and you look at it, and the commission looks at it and says, that doesn't comply with our comp plan or ordinance.
Correct, right.
They wouldn't necessarily be happy with that. Or in some cases, it might be an interpretation. Some of the commission members think, we should do that, some others say, I don't see that as complying with the documentation. So it could be, the applicants don't get what they want.
Right.
Or the commissioners disagree on the interpretation of the documents. You know, if there's a disagreement.
Well, I think, I, to me, if there's a disagreement on interpretation on what's right or wrong, I think we've got to run that to the ground. We've got to get that resolved one way or the other. I don't know, I don't know how that works, but I guess, again, if I'm overruled, or if somebody's unhappy, if somebody wants to do something that's obviously, it's just wrong, I mean, maybe I'll agree that it's wrong, maybe I wouldn't care either way, but if it's wrong, if it's, I mean, I can't do things that are against the rules. So I can't, I can't, you know, if I was on a normal lot, I can't put a pole barn between my house and the road unless there's some extenuating circumstances. I think Liz brought that up with the small buildings because of the lake or something, but anyway, if, if you can't do it, you can't do it. So I guess I'd feel bad if people were unhappy, and I want everybody happy, but if, if it is what it is, I guess, so I'm not, it's not going to bother me.
All right. What challenges might you anticipate if you are selected to be part of the Planning Commission?
Well, what I've already touched on, just my schedule, and again, it might sound, it could sound trivial or something, but again, I, I mean, I survive as a small business owner by taking care of my clients, so I, I have to, and I can't just walk away, but I'm just saying, I'm just letting you know, it would be a challenge. Now, do I think I can make it all work? Yeah, I guess so. I do think so. I'm used to a lot of challenges, so. Other than that, I mean, I, I trust the council, and the Planning and Zoning Commission's been operating, I think, pretty smoothly from what my observations are on it, so.
You mentioned in your application a potential conflict, because you do work for the city.
Oh, thank you, yes. Okay, so in my history here as a general contractor, I've worked on the, we did a lot of work on the next-door maintenance building here, the recycling center, done different projects on that, the fire hall addition, I'm going to be working on the park pavilion, and then Joel Glaz has contacted me about the dugout roof that blew off, and I enjoy, obviously, as a businessman, working in my own town, it's a little shorter commute, and I just like it. I mean, I like doing stuff with the city, and I appreciate the work. A concern I'd have would be if I was on the Planning and Zoning Commission, I would, I would hate to see that look kind of funny if, if I couldn't keep doing things for, for the town. I don't know if there's anything left to do unless roofs keep blowing off, but we're kind of running out of space or projects on existing buildings, but I would hate that that would stop that. I mean, I think, I think if some, if, if I was on the PMZ, and then I'm working on a building and somebody saw that, I'm guessing, based on your judgment, people would understand that you guys understood that. If we were talking, I don't know, but if we were talking about a project, I'd have to probably recuse myself if, if it involved my company doing some work, and I'd happily do that, but I would never want it to be on the PMZ, and then it's like, well, Dana, you're not doing any more work for us, because it'll look kind of fishy. So I wouldn't like that. I'd understand, but I wouldn't like that, because I sure like being able to work, you know, if I can bid things and get jobs, if I'm elect, you know, chosen to do the work, I like to be able to keep doing that.
What about, you know, as a general contractor, you, I'm assuming do business in town other than with the city, but with people that might be affected by Planning Commission decisions?
Well, I, I guess I imagine, I mean, I do, I do work in Nowland, exterior, interior work. Again, I'd have to be very sensitive to that, because I think I play by the rules, and I'd, I'd want to recuse myself, I don't.
Back to the, the example you gave, somebody wants to put a building in front of the house.
Right.
And, and it's commissioned to you, it's money to you if they get to do that.
Well, I, I get that. I mean, for example, friends from my church that live in St. Francis, they, they've got, they've got horses and that, and they wanted to build another building, but they went before the council, and they decided, well, you have too many buildings, and it would have been fun to build, it would have been an indoor riding arena, it would have been fun to do it, but we couldn't, and so be it. I mean, I was, I mean, I do have other work to do too, but I mean, I don't, it is what it is, and the last thing I want to do is have somebody question me, because that doesn't, that doesn't work too good as a Nowland resident, as a, as a businessman, I, you know, I wouldn't want that, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
It's a question on that. So, to your, to your knowledge, has any of your previous, any of your previous contracts with Nowland residents, have any of those projects ever come in front of the council or in front of the PMZ? I don't, in the years that I've been here, I don't remember that.
No, I don't know. The only thing that's ever coming from the council are the jobs I've done for the, the city buildings, where there's been some explanation on that. But other than that, no, I don't, everything's just kind of cut and dried as far as that goes. I mean, we, we built a pretty large building over on Krypton, but that was way I mean, we, we built a pretty large building over on Krypton, but that was way back in the corner, it was, you know, back in the property and all that stuff. And I remember, actually, on that same job, we, we did a garage addition, and that was back when Barry was the inspector, but, you know, to Barry's credit, we were trying to figure out how close we'd get to the center of the road, and so we got a big hundred-foot tape, but we had to actually change our plans and, and move the addition back and do a little bump out of the back. But I mean, again, to Barry's credit, he was trying to make it work, but it wouldn't work, so we, we had to change the plans. But again, that was just with the inspector, not, nothing to do with anything more formal than that.
All right, last question here, and that's, what questions do you have of the council? Since you get a chance, you've got four of the five council members here, what questions do you have for us as it applies to this opportunity?
Well, again, I, the way I look at planning and zoning, we've got to follow rules, and if we feel that as a commission, that the council should consider changing the rules, and that's, you guys are in charge, you know, that's why you got voted in, was to make these decisions. So that's my understanding of it. I, my, my thought is, you know, if somebody wants to do something, but it's, whether it's a, you know, I've seen some, there's a business on Gypsy Valley Road, I know there's one over on, I think it's on Viking, so I kind of follow some of the minutes, but if somebody wants to do something, I'm hoping they can do it, but it's got to be right, make sense, and not set the wrong precedent, and not, not goof things up and devalue properties and that type of thing. So hopefully, when they're allowed to do something, then they follow the rules. If they're supposed to screen it or whatever, hopefully, they follow through with that, so. I mean, I know that over on Gypsy Valley, I think there was some confusion, because I think it was, after Barry was involved and he left, but, you know, it was the, it was where the homeowner built a big building before there was ever a house on it for a few years. And so me and the other neighbors noticed that, but, I mean, none of us got too concerned about it, but it was kind of interesting to see that, but I don't know, there was some confusion, I think, in inspector transition, and, and maybe some lost notes and things like that, and some confusion. So it all, it's all fine, and they, you know, I think they still have to do some more things, but, you know, people should follow through on what they're supposed to do, but.
It also has a lot to do with green acre confusion as well.
Probably, yeah, and that type of thing. But again, I don't, I don't, I don't have any other little questions. But, like I said, I, if it, if it's one person you want, I really want the right person to be selected. I may know a little bit about somebody else, and I think that person has a lot of experience too. And we might share similar experiences, but, but they're at a bigger scale than I am as far as that goes. And so I think that gives that person a lot, a lot of experience too, so.
All right. So council, anything else? Just remember, if we ask any other questions, I'll add it to make sure we ask it. Other candidates as well.
Timeline to Dana knows.
Pardon?
Timeline to Dana knows, next steps, timeline.
The timeline would be, actually Frank had prepared packets that the council are reviewing right now for voting candidates here, if they wanted to look through them. If they're selected, they would be expected to weigh in on something like this right away. My understanding is, we will make a decision tonight and vote on it in our next meeting. And we would expect this person to participate in June, the fourth Tuesday in June, which is twenty eighth? Twenty?
Twenty eight, I believe.
We expect them to be participating in the next P and Z meeting. There is no meeting tomorrow night.
So can I have a question, ask a question?
Yeah.
As a person of consideration, and there's another person of consideration, then will you, as a council, approach whoever you might, if you want any of us to be on it, would you approach us and ask us then?
Frank, Frank would tell you what the council decides.
Okay.
And then if you say, "Yeah, I'm willing to go through with that," if it's you, if you say, "I've changed my mind, don't want to do it," then you would tell Frank, and Frank would notify us. So you either accept or decline once Frank, Frank will tell us what's.
And I won't wait a long time.
Whatever you guys do, it's fine with me, so I don't know.
We want whoever to be ready for the next commission meeting in June. And, you know, to your point on the schedule, sometimes it happens that there isn't business before the commission. So we typically don't meet in December. In this case, we're not meeting in May.
Okay, it was May that was canceled. Okay, I saw that.
And so it just depends on what, what applications and what business Liz brings forward, so. The tentative is, we tell people, "Keep the fourth Tuesday open," but we'll notify as soon as we know better, so. Liz typically notifies us about three weeks out, Frank.
Yeah.
Give you a chance to make gestures, catch.
Well, we, we have time for another question on the site visits? What do they look like? I mean, a site visit, say there's a, is it?
Site visit, typically what happens when Liz puts out the packet, she'll give the information and a contact number, because generally, people like to know before somebody starts walking on their property. And we, we had a, if you go down on the east shore of Twin Lake now, you'll see a bunch of dirt in somebody's front yard. And they, they asked for a variance because they're on the lake, they had high-water setbacks.
Is that on Birchwood?
No.
No, it's right down.
It's right, right where sixty-five turns to Bend Bear.
Okay.
What, what happened there?
They, they couldn't, they wanted to put an addition on their house, just a number of months, and they couldn't, they couldn't meet the setback from the road, and because they're on the lake, they couldn't meet the high-water setback. They were very limited on what they could do, so they asked the council for a variance, and they proceeded through that and got a variance. But when they, before we gave the variance, we asked people to go to the site visit, because what they think is difficulty using their land isn't necessarily what the commission always thinks. Sometimes they just don't want to cut down these trees to meet the, the conditions of the.
Okay.
They were blocked in there, they didn't have.
They just didn't have anything else, similar to the one on Virtu where, if you look at that, their, their yard isn't as big as this room. They just had to make places else to put in them, so they put in a certain type of mound system. But generally, it goes out there and say what they claim versus what you want to see.
Okay, that was something I didn't consider.
Yeah, this is, you could do something, we had one on, on Burns Parkway one time, and the guy just didn't want to cut down a couple of trees. We said, "Well, the variance doesn't apply to you, because you really do have options here." And we, everybody went to the site visit, was able to talk about the options.
All right.
So it's that type of thing where, where what, what you're told, you want to go out and see firsthand, and then you can come back and say, "I see your difficulties," or "I disagree with your difficulties." It's that type of thing typically. Most of those are variances, because the other ones are, you know, it doesn't apply with ordinance or not. Doesn't come before us, if it, if it meets the ordinance, generally, you're not going to see it. And that's why a site visit can be helpful.
And we can do that individually, if we're, if we're on the commission.
Typically, what we do is individually. You contact the property owner, and you say, "I'd like to come out, what's convenient for you?" They'll generally say, "Between this time and this time, give me a call."
Okay.
Somebody wants to, probably the other place you see site visits would be home businesses. You know, what they say isn't going to be a problem to their neighbors, you might go out there and take a look and, and see what you might be able to ask of them. You know, did those neighbors show up and you actually saw what their concern might be? But it's generally, as Jason said, it's not something that happens a lot.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Dana.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
Appreciate it.
I'm gonna wine and say I'm gonna go have lunch, though.
And you can drink your water, too.
In case you are selected, this is what the commission is working on right now.
Okay, thanks, yeah.
Standards for commercial and industrial parks that we've had a moratorium on for a year here, so. That's what we'll be asking in the way you know I'm before the next meeting.
That big building, that, I don't know what they do there on forty-seven, was that, did that have to go before P and Z, or was that?
Because they needed a variance.
Oh, okay.
And they're actually setting up that whole commercial park and the presidential lots behind it, so.
Right.
And that was.
So the road on the north side is the road back to the neighborhood?
Forty acres in the back, there's eight houses potentially working out, and then forty acres in front is a commercial park, industrial park. Which they all know.
It started forty-seven, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, guys, sorry to take another night out.
That's all right. I'm glad we had a couple candidates.
That's why we get the big bucks, you know.
That's like P and Z.
Yeah.
All right, thanks a lot.
Thanks, Dana. Have a good evening.
Jason, sometime I'd love to see Cat, I don't know if you ever give tours, but.
We give tours, yeah. Just get ahold, maybe we can figure something out.
Yeah.
We just had thirty high school kids in there today.
It'll bring back memories from the old days.
He worked for Luffett?
Yeah, I thought there was a bit of a conflict of interest when I saw his reference with Mayor P. L. I need to have friends in town. I'm just teasing.
Actually, the person you were talking about, the opening, was Frank. They were dealing with the snow block, right?
Hello.
How are you? Oh, you're set, never mind.
Good for you.
All right. Jamie Lewis. Hit that bottom button there, and it should turn green.
Yep.
So this is our interim city administrator, Frank Boils. This is council member Jason Alders, and obviously Mayor P. L., we've met. Council member Rainville, council member Blake. One council member is not here tonight, and another obligation, so we'll be the committee today.
Okay.
So, so what we have here is, I'll be asking a series of questions, and you take as long as you'd like to think them through and answer them, and then the council will all be taking notes, and when we're done here, we'll discuss, we've had, obviously, another candidate who just left the building. We'll discuss the councils, you at that point make a recommendation, and, and then Frank will communicate to the applicants what we decide. Our hope is that whoever is, is chosen, we have a packet of information here that we'll give you either way. But this is what the commission's working on right now as far as amendment to restrictions on our commercial and industrial developments here. Our meeting tomorrow night for May has been canceled, and our next meeting will be June, did we confirm, was it the twenty-eighth? The fourth Tuesday in June.
Yes.
So our, our hope is that then the council will take action in June, and that the selected candidate would be participating in the June meeting. We also have a training session that we put on.
Twenty-eight?
Frank and planner Liz Stockman put on orientation and training so that people can get up to speed quickly, so. So that's kind of the background, and if you're ready, we'll just start right in. All right, so our interview tonight, again, this is Monday, May twenty-third. And we're interviewing Jamie Lewis for a position on the Planning and Zoning Commission. So Jamie, it's a long question here, but first, what I want to know is a little bit about yourself. Highlight what you know about the city of Now Then, and then tell us why you'd be interested in serving on this commission.
I've been a resident here, it'll be six years in October. Before then, I lived in Becker, graduated from there. I have lived up north, north of Walker, Minnesota, a small town. I think I had fifteen in my class. It's a very small town, grew up on a lake. And we have five children, my husband and I. We live just right down the road in the Round Barn. Love, absolutely love the barn and the whole community. I love how rural it feels, it almost feels like I'm up north, which obviously I like. I own a general contracting company. We do mostly remodeling, but some building. Probably, on average, four to six houses a year, new construction. Mainly work in the metro area, the five metro counties, mostly Minneapolis-St. Paul. My husband and I do that together, and most of our children work for us, or their significant others. We work from our home, and we have an office there that, there's four of us that are working there daily. I'm trying to phase myself out. I have two grandchildren who I try to spend plenty of the time with, but, and I might have some drool or graham cracker crust on them right now, because I've had them for several days, so. I work probably twenty to twenty-five hours a week in the office. Probably spend the other eighty on the house and the property. We've been trying to restore the barn for the entire time we've been here, so. It's definitely a prized possession of the state, I think, so.
One of only two left in the county.
Yeah, we've, I've actually had, I didn't know exactly what I was getting into, but two bus tours. It was a coach bus with fifty elderly people. I think they were, they were at the church, they aligned church for lunch first, and they, the first time they came in, I wasn't expecting fifty people, but, and then he put me on the spot to talk about the barn, so that was pretty fun, but, no, I, I would love everyone to be able to see it and, and enjoy it. But he has, he has told me he's, he's written many books about barns, and he has said that the, this is the nicest one in the state. So I feel pretty, pretty proud of that.
Good, that's good, Dana.
So why would you be interested in joining planning commission with all of that?
I don't really have a great answer for that, except that I really love the community here, and I would like to give back in some way, and this seems like a need here for you guys. And we volunteered somewhat in Becker on different boards and a lot of youth sports, and I think we made a difference doing that, and I think that's how communities are, become great, is by people giving back.
So Jamie, briefly describe what you think are the three most important personal qualities that you believe are necessary to operate effectively as a team.
Well, I believe listening would probably be the number one. I think speaking for the majority of the people and putting their needs first, not thinking personally what you would want or what you would like to see happen. And then the other probably would be, you know, doing your fair share of research, learning about what the issue is, and making sure you do your due diligence on finding out what would be the best response.
Thank you. What are your thoughts related to maintaining our city's rural character? And then what does your view of growth look like?
Well, in a perfect world, I would like to see none. I'd like it to stay this, this same way. We have a convertible that we drive around Now Then and on nice days, and I absolutely love, I love this community and what it has. And I absolutely love, I love this community and what it has to offer. I guess if I would say if there were growth, it would be to help the people that are here enjoy it more. I am in favor of keeping it rural. Somehow, I think the progression skipped us from Ramsey to St. Francis. I'm not sure how, but it appears, well, I'm guessing you guys. But, you know.
We have a cloaking device.
Yeah. Yeah, as you drive through those towns, even Elk Grove has really taken off, and. Yeah, I mean, there's plenty of city around, not a lot of country.
So with your work experience and the education you have with skills and abilities, how would you relate your background to what you see this position needs?
You know, I'm not really sure that it does, except that I've been on the other side of it. I've always been a part of building, my family builds log homes up north. We're on very, very, I would say, late committees, the planning and zoning up there. So, a lot of talk around the dinner table, you know, with grandpa and mom and dad about that kind of stuff. So, once again, from the other side, you know, the builder's perspective of it all. And then my own personal work experience, I've always been in some kind of building. Either my own company, or I've worked for several others where I've had to go through the process of trying to get things done. So I guess I don't really have any on the other side, you know, as far as deciding those things. But I'm familiar with how the other person feels, I guess.
That is good.
So you have empathy from the other side of things?
Yeah.
In your experience with being on that side of things, how familiar are you with open meeting laws?
I guess I'm really not, I've never really been in this situation before. But I do believe transparency and honesty would be the best policy. You know, I think that in everyday life applies. I think when people start teaming up together and not keeping it, you know, as a whole unit, you know, as a team, I think that's when the problem would arise.
So one of the, the open meeting law requires that public bodies like councils or commissions conduct their business in public if they're, if they're a voting quorum. So councilmembers, if it's more than two people, we have to be doing this in public, which includes phone calls, texts, emails, those types of things, any type of communication. So you're not, as you say, people teaming up on something outside of the public, we don't know how, the public doesn't know how we got to a decision.
Right.
And, and so with that restriction, obviously in business, you don't have those same restrictions. Do you have a concern? Obviously, you say transparency and honesty are the best policies. Do you have any concerns functioning under a system where you couldn't necessarily email other people on the commission to get their opinion? Or, or conduct business so that you're more efficient once you do get to a meeting?
No, not at all. I totally agree with that. I think it's probably the best way to handle it.
Obviously, commissioners are expected to come prepared for and be in place at the start of commission meetings. With all the things you're doing, how do you schedule, how can you adjust your schedule to accommodate time to review meeting materials? Or potentially make site visits to get more details on a project and still attend meetings once a month?
Well, being self-employed, I have a pretty flexible schedule. As I said, I'm not working full-time anymore. And as far as getting to the meetings, you know, a nice brisk walk, the road would be, would be great. Yeah, I, I don't want to say I have all the time in the world, but I do have a lot of free time.
Obviously, Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission is an advisory group, a very important role doing research and making a presentation to the council with a recommendation. How would you react if you were part of a commission recommendation that was not voted on the same way, wasn't accepted by the council?
Well, first of all, I wouldn't take it personally, it's not really my issue. I'm just doing the research to find out, you know, what the best angle on it would be. So I guess I, I would follow up with asking questions on, you know, why they chose to go a different route, to better learn, you know, what, what their thoughts were on the issue. And I guess just hearing other people's views on, on why they chose differently, you know, to better learn.
Have you had any opportunities to look at the Now Then 2040 Conference of Plan, or Planning Ordinances, or Zoning Regulations?
Not until I applied for this. I read several, just because I was interested. I also read minutes back several years, just to see what it was involving. Yeah, it's even weird to even talk about 2040, but I guess just preparing for the future.
Did you read minutes, or did you watch them online?
Both.
And you're, you're still applying, that's good. So commission members need to listen to both sides of a matter with an open and fair mind. And we can't speak to a matter until we've heard all the evidence presented. We have to evaluate the information and then make a recommendation. Doesn't always please the applicant, or necessarily even our view please all the other commissioners. How would you respond when either commission members or applicants are not pleased with what you would recommend?
Honestly, I just, being respectful and considerate, I guess, is, you know, the number one rule in life, as far as I'm concerned, not only with this, but, you know, dealing with angry homeowners, or, you know, whatever, angry inspectors. You know, I guess, just, just being considerate, listening to both sides.
So what challenges might you anticipate if you're selected to be part of the Planning Commission? That's a pretty wide open question.
Yeah, I'm guessing lots, seeing how I don't really know much about it. I'm very willing to learn. But I, I'm not really sure, I guess.
All right, and then the big question, what questions do you have for us as a council?
You know, after reading the minutes, most of it seems fairly simple, but there do seem to be some, some things that don't go well. So how much of that are we, are we all working together on? Or, I guess, I, I just want to know what, if there's teamwork involved, or.
Is there a specific?
Specific issue? I wouldn't remember names, I guess, or anything from the minutes, but, like, could, do you guys go to each other and talk about things? Or is it just one person doing something and then presenting it to everyone?
The, as far as recommendations from the commission, you know, again, they typically vote to forward a recommendation to the council. The council, sometimes, I'm liaison, so I, I'm a non-voting member at all the commission, or all the commission meetings. Sometimes councilmembers will attend in the audience and watch, other times they'll watch online to see what the discussion was. We're all receiving the packet from, so we get the meeting minutes, and the recommendations from the commission, and then Liz's findings of facts. So we all have the same information, we're not allowed to go to each other and talk about it.
As a group?
As a group. That's the open meeting law, so we can talk to one other council member, but that's it.
We can talk about it at the meeting.
At the meeting, we, it's all open for discussion.
We can hash it all out at the meeting, just so it's open to the public.
So the recommendation comes before the meeting?
Yes. So the recommendation comes from the commission on the fourth Tuesday, and then that is presented to the council with the full research packet for their meeting on the second Tuesday of the next month. So they get all the information, they can go back and watch it online. If they're, if they look at the meeting minutes and they don't quite understand the discussion, they can go back and actually watch it like everybody else. So, okay, what was the discussion going on there? Typically, when a recommendation comes from the commission, Liz will be at that council meeting to explain any background information that we, additional that we would need, and I would also be there, having been the liaison at the meeting. So we can say, here's what the commission discussion was. Generally, the council goes along with the recommendation as long as the commission is keeping in mind the comp plan, the ordinances, the zoning regulations. We have some in years past, and some where the commission just wanted to get things done, and the council voted differently because they saw it, it was violating the, one of those documents, or all of those documents. And that's where you get into lawsuits. If you're not consistent, judges call it arbitrary and capricious. You just wanted it done, but it doesn't go along with the regulations, and then you end up in court. So our job, and part of the, the training for this position is we have our attorney, and then Liz and Frank all do an orientation and training. And one of the attorney's things is how to stay out of court, and if you do go in court, how to make his job as easy as possible, so he does part of that training.
That was my next question. What is the training involve?
Mr. Mayor, before we go any further, the other thing too is that after P and Z discussion, there may be issues that are brought forward. That those, the answers to those different issues come to council, and that may change the view of the project. So P and Z may have made a recommendation with the understanding that A, B, and C still need to be looked at, and when A, B, and C was looked at, that was not in, in line with the comp plan, or an ordinance, or something like that. So that could change a vote, based on, between what P and Z decided and what council decided.
And there are times where council is presented with information that the P and Z didn't get to, so. Council has to take the big picture into place, and the commission is generally what's right before them. But most of it is, you know, it's going to be, whatever's discussed will be out in the public.
Probably the only other question is, what are you looking for in this position?
You know, we're looking for people that are willing to do the work, as you were talking about there, to take a look at, at the regulations that are in place, the comp plan, the ordinances, the zoning regulations. And do the research and say, well, obviously Liz provides findings of fact, which is a lot of it, but it's also bringing the questions forward. People want to use their land in a certain way, what does it, what can we do without setting a negative precedent? What do the regulations and ordinances say we can do? Somebody who can, can work that out, and as you were indicating, respectfully, you know, people come and they have, sometimes developers, there's a monetary goal form out there, but the city can't go along with it. You, you need to be able to, as a commission, if you deny something, we have to put that in writing. You know, anytime we deny somebody's request, it has to be specifically, why did you do that? And it has to align with, with the guidelines that are in place, because it could end up in court. So we want people that are tough enough to make those decisions, tough enough to stand up and say, you know, everybody seems to want the same variance, maybe we should be changing some of those ordinances. People who do the research and say, let's make a recommendation to council for this. So we want good teammates, but basically, people who do the research are respectful of the people that come before them, because for a lot of people, this is their first experience with what they consider city council. Even though the commission members aren't people they elected, they're people we appointed. And so how the commission treats them is their first representation of how the city treats them. So thorough research, professional presentation, those are a big part of it. People that are concerned about our community. Your decisions and your recommendations are going to be a big part of the future of the community. So that's what I personally looking for, I'll let the other council members speak for themselves, but.
So I think we have like, like a set of like legacy policies that have happened prior to Now Then, and it probably isn't as aligned with some of the current ordinances. So you have to be respectful of that when people are trying to make a change, because they see this person has it or that, and they need to understand the why, and why we made those changes to P and Z. So having some of that is great, and then we have the, kind of the, I'd say the residents that are looking to do, in addition to their home or another barn, and make sure that is aligned with what our current goals are. And then you also have some, I would say, commercial development that is, comes in on the edges, not as, probably as much as in other areas. So it's understanding, how does, how does the city want to grow, and how do we want to grow as a community? Because I, I think everybody in Now Then tells you they like Now Then because of the way it is now, and they don't necessarily want it to become an Elk River or Ramsey. So it's a balance, right, on how do we continue to grow? Because there's a ton, there's a ton of people that didn't live here ten years ago that moved in, there's a ton of people that would like to come in, and then there's residents that are approaching a time in their life where they would like to potentially use their land as a, as a retirement tool, right? So it's trying to balance that and having a consistent approach to that. So when person A comes in in January, it's the same story when person B or C comes in in June. And it's understanding, okay, what does a commercial development look like for Now Then? What does somebody that wants to split their land look like in Now Then? And then I've got a developer that wants to come in and put in X, Y, Z, what does that, you know, how does that affect it, and what's our, what's our recommendation? So, I mean, I look at the, the role. I got into it because I didn't want the commercial development expanding outside a certain footprint. And we want to, as we continue to grow, we align ourselves to whatever it is, the 2020 plan, or now it's the 2040 plan, and then look at that as a community. Because there is, there is going to be some change as we go forward, but how do we control that and guide that, and when the change? And when the change does occur, is it the product that we want that got developed? Or is it something we should have done differently in terms of codes or whatever? So that's what we're, that's what I'm looking for.
You will get, you will get an orientation, whoever is hired will get an orientation where go over a lot of things with you before you even have to start and, and answer questions and things too, so. You won't, it, everything seems daunting at the beginning, but it's your, and you have a good background.
What I'm doing, but...
Yeah, that's right.
Because I, I, I have no experience in this, but.
Well, you sorta do, you have the up, you have the other side of it, yeah.
Which is, it's great, that's great experience.
That is great experience.
You understand how that, the process works and...
Yeah, you're not cold turkey.
Right.
I, I also think too with, you know, the understanding that people are allowed to use their land. Uh, councilmember Alders talked, touched on the retirement piece. If you have a forty acre lot, you wanna split it, that's your retirement, uh, fund. People are allowed to do things with their land. The neighbors may not like it, but as long as they meet all the requirements of, like, say, eight for forty, and they have a developer's agreement and everything, it, it, it would go through. People don't understand that they, um, they, they've been able to look at, um, at a hayfield or a cornfield for twenty-five, thirty, forty, fifty years, and don't want that changed. The only way to prevent that from changing is to buy that land. And, I mean, we just recently had that at the property on, the commercial property on forty-seven, where the residents of Oak Grove were upset because there were gonna be these homes up against them. Well, again, the owner of that property has the right to do things as long as it meets our comp plan, our ordinances, you know, what are guiding policies. And just trying to be able to explain that to people sometimes is difficult.
So as long as, uh, the use is the same, the neighbors don't get a say, or?
If, if the, um, if there are no variances or anything needed, no, you can, you can split a lot, forty acre property, and they can build homes.
If you're trying to change the, the use of the land?
Do something different, yeah, then that comes in front of P and Z and then...
And then the, the neighbors are allowed to come to council meetings? Is that where they present their...
Yes, yes, so, so it, as, as, the commission meetings are all open to the public. And so if, if a land use change is going on, you've seen our blue signs around town at different times, anybody within a certain distance of that proposed change gets a letter notifying that this, this is a proposed change. And so they have an opportunity to weigh in beforehand, or come to the meeting and weigh in in person. And we've had some where land use was proposed that is inconsistent with our comp plan and our ordinances, and a hundred neighbors all got together and came to the meeting and said, we want you to stick by the ordinances, and the council did. There were others where the land use was consistent with the comp plan and our ordinances, but the neighbors didn't like it, because as councilmember Rainville said, they'd been looking at this nice hayfield forever. They ran their dogs there, and they watched sunsets over that, and all of a sudden, some homes are, probably will pop up on some of it, and some businesses will come up on some of it. But it's consistent with our comp plan and our, our guiding documents. So they could weigh in, and, but unless there was a evidence of something inconsistent with that, they have an opinion at that point, but the city also has an obligation to say, that's what it's zoned, that's what can be done with it, within those regulations, and that's where the commission weighs in. Are we making sure that all these Ts are crossed, NIs are dotted? So Liz prepares documents, we listen to the neighbors if they have concerns. Yeah, there is a lighting ordinance, there is a sign ordinance, there are road ordinances. These things all have to be complied with. At that point, you're just making sure we're, we're meeting the requirements, because that is zoned for that. So that, that is, you know, there's two sides of that. If it's not zoned for that, you've still gotta listen to people that want it, but they can't have it. In the other case, they don't want it, but these people get it. Your job is to make sure we do that, and part of that recommendation is, did we make sure we covered all the bases? If the commission misses that and it's brought up to the council, that's sometimes where the council disagrees with the commission. I know you felt strongly about this, but this is what the ordinance says.
Well, I am an extreme rule follower, very black and white. I don't like to do stuff wrong, so, yeah, I get all that.
Great.
All right. Anything else from the council?
No.
All right. Any other questions for us?
Um, I don't think so. This seems to be a fairly long process. I'm just wondering when...
Decision to be made, yes.
The, the decision will be made tonight, and Frank will then communicate, uh, to all candidates, uh, what the recommendation is from the, this commission. The council will vote on it in, in June ninth, our council meeting. And the expectation is the selected candidate would be available on June twenty-eighth, to be at the first commission meeting. And just in case, we're gonna give you a document that if you're selected, you can weigh in on June twenty-eighth on what they're gonna be discussing, one of the items that we're discussing, so. So yes, we apologize for the, the, the way the process has gone to this point. Uh, we modified this last year. We wanted to make sure that, once we posted it, we had thirty days to make sure interested candidates could apply, so. From that time on, the delay was trying to get council members, enough council members together to actually do an interview. We had conflicting schedules here in May, so. It, it took longer than we anticipated. We'd like to blame it all on Frank, but we can't. Part of the job. So yes, that's, that's our schedule.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for coming in.
Thanks for coming on, Frank.
Well, it was a long drive.
It's good to meet you, Jamie.
This is our modification to architectural standards for commercial industrial spaces in town. So if I find that, you can, take a look, you'll see the changes proposed in there. Should you be selected, then that's what we'll be discussing in June.
All right.
And if not, you'll be up to date on all commercial industrial standards.
Great. All right, thank you, guys.
Thanks, Jamie. Have a good evening.
Well? Thoughts?
I thought both candidates were very capable of the position.
Yes.
My opinion, I believe our second candidate's probably a better match for the position. I do think that the first candidate has some potential conflicts of interest that, if we have two equally qualified candidates, I'd rather go with the candidate that doesn't have any conflict, potential conflicts of interest. And I believe Jamie will do a great job, and I think she'd bring a lot to the role as a general contractor in both sides of the, you know, in terms of, she's dealt with the ordinances on being a contractor, and I, I think she would, both of them seem like they would do a good job of preparing for it. I just kinda felt like she didn't raise the red flag that she has a really huge concern on the time, and I believe she has less potential conflict of interest with the city.
And she has ta, she, did you say that? She's the time where she could attend things, she's not, she's, she's moving away from her vocation instead of going into it more full force.
And I think, I believe Dana can make it work. So not, if we pick him, I believe he will make it work.
Yes.
I believe it'll be, uh, I believe Jamie has, you know, potentially more time for the position, my opinion. But both of them were like, great candidates.
Yes.
It made me like, feel good that they are doing it, because they wanna help the community and they wanna give back to the community. So that's gotta, I mean, that's gotta make us, as council members, feel good that we have residents willing to like, step up and help out and make the community, or keep the community...
And that they live Nowland, and they bragged about how proud they were to be live here, and I thought all those things were really good.
Right, so I, I thought both...
Both of them.
I thought both interviews were great.
I agree.
So that was my, that's my...
Pretty much interchangeable from that standpoint.
Yes.
The fact that they're, they're, they're general contractors, the fact that they know it from the other side.
Yep.
Which would be a great add to the P and Z. It would be a really good add.
Yeah, I, I think they have two quality candidates like this, it's, it's very comforting to me.
Too bad we can't take them both.
Well, I, I just hope whoever doesn't get it doesn't get discouraged when the next opening comes up. Councilmember Rainville?
I, I don't disagree that we, we, we have two good candidates. I, I credit Dana for bringing forward the conflict, or possibility of a conflict. I, I think if there were to be a conflict, he would, as he said, you'd recruit, you recuse your, excuse yourself from it. But I believe it's better not to go down that avenue if we don't have to. We have a, a good candidate in, um, Jamie, and I, I think she'll do well. I, I don't believe, what I know of Dana, um, Dana is a very professional person, would not put himself in a position of any conflict. And, and the fact that he brought it up is, was a good sign. And I think that Jamie would do well, yeah.
Yeah, I believe so too.
And I think it's nice to have another woman on the council too, on the zoning. I just think there's a different...
Nothing wrong with a little diversity.
Right, and, and it's also a little different insight into things than all, everything being all men.
Yeah, there's nothing wrong with diversity.
And I realize we have Kelly, that's about it, right?
Kelly is.
Yeah, so she'd probably be thrilled to death to have some camaraderie, even though they can't talk to each other.
But that wouldn't be the sole reason, just to, for the record.
No, never, but it is something too. It's another positive.
Yep.
Well, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
If there are no objections, I would move, um, the appointment, uh, the recommendation to appoint Jamie Lewis to our planning and zoning committee.
I'll second it. We have a motion, Councilmember Rainville, second, Councilmember Alders. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Boy, we really had two good candidates. I cannot believe it.
Yeah, I, I just...
This is a good candidate.
Looking at this, I'm thinking...
I would love to have both of them on there. They're really good.
You're matching right down the line here, you know, it's like...
Yeah, yeah.
And, and I, I do think, you know, to Jason's point, you know, Dana, just at least bringing up the concern that, even though it's just once a month, I don't wanna, he doesn't want anybody down in it, but it's just warning ahead of time that... And that's, it's, it's reasonable thinking.
Yes.
You know, he's just saying, just in case, I wanna let you know ahead of time.
Yes.
And, and I do, you know, his comment on his application where he's saying he doesn't wanna do anything that would jeopardize the opportunity to serve the city in other ways too. For what it's worth, he's also one of our snowplow drivers technically.
Yeah, I just, if, you know, we just wanna protect ourselves from anything that gives the, I would say, the...
Parents.
The appearance of a conflict of entrance. And no matter how clean we think we separated on our side, if you're a Nowland resident who potentially is on the same line of work or didn't get the bid, you could make a sup, they would make, they potentially would make an assumption that wouldn't be right, but it's still, sometimes it's not the, uh, it's not the facts, it's the perception. So I think we just wanna keep, keep out of that if we can.
I also like Dana's personality and energy. I mean, he had a, a kind of an upbeat sway about him. I think that's a nice, nice way to come across to people too, so. But I think...
He's a real people person, that's for sure.
We definitely...
And if I didn't think Jamie was just as qualified, I would say so, but I believe she's equally as qualified and equally as, as, will be equally as competent in the position.
I agree, yeah. She is very qualified. Frank, could I extend his hand?
Frank, so the question? I'm supposed to say, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Would you mind terribly if we offered the orientation to both candidates and all present members of the planning commission?
If, if they're willing to do it.
Yeah, it's voluntary.
I mean, yeah.
But we're gonna go, we're gonna go through the whole thing with one person, or a, a number.
Is it any different than what we did last year, because we brought on three candidates last year? Is it the same?
We haven't finished this year. We started through it and didn't complete it in one night, so there's, there's a good chunk of the packet left to do.
Okay.
So the orientation part that we've already done, certainly the rest of the commission wouldn't necessarily need to sit through it, but the rest of the commission is expected to sit through the second part, the legal part, that we haven't got to yet. So I would think that...
Are Frank and Liz going to run that?
Well, the, the legal aspect.
The legal aspect, we have Bob, typically. And that's what we haven't got to yet. But I think the orientation certainly, um, we just went through the planning zoning policy and that portion with Liz and Frank. So I wouldn't expect the P and Z to, because that was just last month, to need to do that again. But if we time it in such a way, maybe we, we get that portion done for Jamie and Dana if he wants to sit through it. And any other residents that might wanna sit through it, that think they might wanna apply for this in the future, I, I wouldn't be opposed to that either, but, but certainly Jamie needs to get that part of it, and then maybe we schedule that so that the commission gets the rest of it, and Jamie can just sit through on that part.
Good, thank you.
And, and like I said, if there are others, if Dana or others who may wanna consider this in the future wanna sit through that, it's, it's public data, I mean, we're gonna record it.
Sure.
They can sit through it in person, so they can ask questions, or they can watch it online.
Awesome.
Yeah.
All right, anything else?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
Would that be something we would also wanna put on the website, so people have access to that? As far as the training, the PowerPoint, whatever it is that you're using to train them? They'd at least have the written copy that they can refer to of this, think about doing.
They, they have the, the written, obviously the documents, the planning zoning policy is on there, should be on there. And the other training should be, and then they'll also have access to the video, because we, to record all that, so. But we record and publicize more things than some cities. Didn't realize other cities aren't doing work sessions and similar training like this. I do think we are pretty open and transparent with everything we're doing, so. And if you wanna be on the commission in the future, you just heard all the questions, unless we change them. So, I mean, we're not hiding anything, so.
If there is no other business, I move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, the motion is second. It is, uh, two minutes after seven, we are adjourned.